Or do we look at sort of what is the park benefit? The final thing is whether or not the, if the proposed improvements include structures, is there a recreational purpose? And certainly the pedestrian path, we've got some testimony from Mr. Lewis that the path does serve a recreational purpose. Does each structure have to serve a recreational purpose independently? Or could an overall recreational benefit for the project overcome a structure limitation? So those are just some questions that I've posed for the commission's consideration. So at this point, it does not require voter approval. Approve the application and find that the subdivision criteria can be met. And if voter approval is required, include a condition of approval that requires voter approval, or deny the application, finding that the subdivision criteria cannot be met. Once a tentative decision is made, staff will draft findings consistent with this decision in return for adoption at a subsequent meeting. That concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to reserve my questions until after the testimony.
Same.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the applicant. I remind the applicant, they have 15 minutes, and I'm going to keep everybody on time tonight.
And Mr. Mayor, before I begin, I'm going to hand, pardon me, I'm going to hand out a letter that I'll refer to in my testimony, and I'll hand that to your city recorder.
Great, thank you.
So name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday, members of the City Commission. My name is Mike Robinson. My mailing address was 1120 Northwest Couche, spelled C-O-U-C-H Street, 10th floor, Portland, Oregon, 972094128. I'm here with Mark Handris, and I'm representing Mark and his company tonight. Mark, you want to give your address?
Yeah, my name is Mark Handris, 1981 Lima Falls Drive, Wesleyan, Oregon.
Thanks, sir. We have a couple of other folks here tonight. Bruce Goldton, who is the project civil engineer, is here, as well as Darren Gustorff, who is the project manager. All four of us are here to answer questions that you ask or that the public raise, and we're confident we can answer them. So our 15 minutes, Mayor, are going to be utilized in this way. I'm going to talk first about the charter, and then I'm going to turn the remainder of our presentation time over to Mr. Handris, who will talk about the subdivision. I will say that we've reviewed the revised conditions of approval that were prepared by Ms. Turway tonight, and we agree with those revised conditions of approval for the subdivision. And I, we also agree, of course, that we meet the approval criteria. So let me talk first about the charter. I think your deputy city attorney did a nice job of summarizing it, and I apologize if I'm somewhat repetitive. I'll try and go as quickly as I can and minimize the repetition. But first, I want to know three important facts, not only for this commission and, but for the public as well. The exhibit before you shows something very important. We're not subdividing the park. I think it's easy for folks to get confused about applications such as this, where you have a piece of ground and then an easement next to it. But we want to be very clear, we're not subdividing the park. The property that are, that is proposed to be subdivided into the 11 lots, that is fee-owned by Mr. Handris's company. The easement, as Ms. Richter said, is simply that, it's an easement, but it's on the city park. The only thing that we will do on the easement is construct the road, the swale, which is a utility for the road, so to speak, and the sidewalk. So no subdivision, no lock construction on the park. Secondly, and I want to just make this clear as well, we're not proposing to dedicate the street to the public. We're proposing simply to build a private road in the 50-foot wide easement. Private roads are allowed by Title 17 of the Oregon City Municipal Code. And lastly, there may be some question, because we're dealing with legal descriptions, whether this easement is correctly shown on the city maps. So earlier today, we asked Centerline Surveying to look at the legal descriptions and compare what those legal descriptions showed them to the maps in the record before you and the public. And what I just gave you is a letter dated October 18th, 2017, from Toby Bolden of Centerline Surveying. Mr. Bolden is an Oregon-registered professional land surveyor. He looked at those documents, and he concluded that in fact, the easement description is accurate based on the legal description of the recorded document in the Clackens County records. So I thought those facts would be helpful not only to this commission, Mayor Holliday, but to the public as well. So secondly, what is the, what is this easement, and what is it grant? And I'll minimize what I say here, because again, I think your deputy city attorney did a nice job of it. This is a document that was recorded in the public records in 1962, so whenever anyone buys this property subject to the easement, they take their title subject to the easement. And that property owner, the predecessor entitled to the city, gave the predecessor entitled to Mr. Handris's company the right to use that 50-foot width for roadway purposes, no other limitation. And because it's not, and it wasn't exclusive to one person or a set of invitees, we call it a non-exclusive easement. That's why we say in our application, it's a private roadway, but it's open to the public. So park users can use it, they can walk on it, they can drive on it, park maintenance employees can use it to reach the park, and the folks that who live, who will live in these seven homes can use it. But we're using it for the purpose that it was granted for in 1962. So I've described what it is, I've described what it, what it provides for. And as Ms. Richter said, when the city purchased the property in 2002, their title was subject to this right. In other words, you, when you bought it, city bought it, they had someone look at the title, recorded document, just like when you buy your house, you get to look at that sheath full of documents. So this is why the city attorney, the deputy city attorney, has said, this is likely part of the legal status. And I would go further and say it is part of the legal status. It was on the city's title. When they bought it, it's still there. So what does all this mean in terms of your charter? Well, she's again stated the issue very clearly. You need to find two things in order to determine that a vote of electorate is not required. The first is that it doesn't change the legal status. The second is that we're not constructing permanent buildings or structures. So with respect to the legal status, I think you can conclude that because the city knowingly took title to the property when it purchased it, subject to the easement, the legal status of the property is, it has a 50-foot wide easement for roadway purposes, which includes the utilities for the road. There's no doubt in my mind that you would make the right decision if you said, by using this easement for roadway purposes, as Mr. Handris is proposing, that doesn't change the legal status of the park. And even though we wanted to dedicate it in one of the past proposals, that might have changed the legal status. We understand that's an issue, and so we're just proposing to leave it as a private easement and construct the roadway that the easement permits. Second issue is whether, whether the road, the swale, which goes along with the road to capture its stormwater and clean it, and the sidewalk are structures. And we don't believe they are for a couple of reasons. One is, your Title 17 defines buildings and structures, but it also defines roadways and streets separately. That tells us that city, at least in Title 17, treats streets differently from structures. And if you think about how your zoning ordinance function, functions, that makes a lot of sense. Now, this deputy city attorney has also pointed out, there's a general definition of the code includes public streets. But this, it doesn't exclude what we're proposing to do here, because again, this street, which even though it's private, is open to the public. We're going to let anyone that wants to drive on it, walk on it, do whatever they want. We're not going to exclude anyone. Now, there is some testimony before you that suggests that a road is a structure. And I think you have the ability to make a reasonable determination about what your charter requires. It's your charter, after all, and you get great deference in how you apply that. It seems to us that a road is not a structure for a number of reasons. But let me also talk about the reasons that folks have suggested that it is a structure. For example, someone cited O.R.S. 310.140, which is the definition of structure. That's the Measure 5 statute. It doesn't have anything to do with what is a building, or what is a road, or anything else. It had to do with tax assessment. So I don't think that definition is particularly relevant, or helpful, or instructive to you in interpreting your charter. There are definitions that have been supplied to you, which come out, come from the Oregon Residential Specialty Code and Oregon Structural Specialty Code. If you look at the statute that authorizes the adoption of those codes, it's all about governing buildings, not about roads. I suspect that there is not a single regulation in, and I've not looked at all hundreds of pages, but it doesn't deal with roads. It deals with how we safely construct buildings. And lastly, there's something called the International Zoning Code. I have no idea what that is, but I think what's relevant is the Oregon City Municipal Code. But in making this decision, as deputy city attorney Richter said, you get to decide how best to apply this term. And the only thing the applicant would offer to you in the way of decision-making is employ what is reasonable. Is a structure a road? Doesn't seem reasonable. They're two different things. The zoning code treats them differently. People think of them differently. And so when you apply this term in your charter, I think you can reach the conclusion that a road, subject to an easement that allows it, is not a structure. So therefore, because it's not illegal, it doesn't change the legal status of the park, and we're not proposing to construct a permanent structure, we don't violate, or, I'm sorry, the charter does not require a vote of the public. One other thing I wanted to mention, and again, the deputy city attorney did a good job of this. The two proposals that went to the voters in 2015 and 2016 are very different from ones before you tonight. I think the slide did a nice job of explaining that. But if you look at page two of her memorandum, and pages five and six of the staff report, you can get some additional information on what distinguishes those two prior votes from the applications that's before you tonight. So I'm sure there are other arguments we can make, but I think those are the main arguments that this commission faces in making this decision. We think you can find that the charter does not require a public vote, because the use of the easement does not change the legal status, since the city took title to the property, subject to the easement. And we don't think the roadway, the swale, or the sidewalk are permanent structures in any reasonable definition that the city commission might reach. For all those reasons, we'd ask you to follow the, one of the options, which is to approve the subdivision and find that a vote is not required under the charter. Mayor, that's all I have. I'll turn it over to Mr. Handris.
Yeah.
You've got six minutes, Mark.
Okay, yeah, just really quickly, you know, the one thing that is, I want to make clear to everybody is, half the street is being built on our property. The full half-street is. That includes the sidewalk, the planter strip, the curb, and then half of the street. The only area we're using within, within the easement is 12 feet of additional driving surface. So, you know, typically, when you do a half-street, you do half-street plus 10 or plus 12. So we've just slid over the 12 feet of additional driving surface in the easement. We brought everything else, all the utilities, the sewer, the water, the storm, everything into our property on our half-street. The only water detention activities we have within the easement only serve the 12-foot section. So we've brought everything that relates to the subdivision onto our property, only the additional driving surfaces on the, on the 12. And that's basically, that's basically all I wanted to get across.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on to...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will we ask questions?
Oh, yeah. Sit down for a second, guys. Sorry, is there questions the applicant, before we move on, or do we want to do that now?
Almost had a clean getaway.
Go ahead. Do it.
I have a number of questions. One for Mr. Robinson as attorney. I'm reading the statutory, statutory warranty deed, which apparently was from the school district to the city of Oregon City.
Can I, would you mind letting me get my confidence?
Certainly, I think you should.
Well, while we're waiting for that, Carrie, I want to ask you one question. When the city bought the, the land for Wesleyan Park, could we have petitioned or asked for a removal of that easement at the time we purchased?
I wasn't there, but yes, I, certainly you could have asked.
Okay.
As part of a negotiation.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
It's a straightforward question. If I'm reading what appears to be the recorded easement, it says, I quote, "The person acquiring fee title to the property should check with the appropriate city or county planning department to verify approved uses and to determine any limits." I won't do the rest. Was that just an oversight? Was there no concern that we'd be in conflict with the city charter, charter on parks? I read that, and it looks like there should have been some due diligence in determining that.
Commissioner O'Donnell, that is standard language that Oregon state law requires every deed to enclose, to include. And I can't tell you why the purchaser, I can't tell you what the purchaser was thinking. I would tell, I would tell you that it would be, I think it would be surprising if someone were put on notice by that language, that they ought to check the charter, because it talks about uses, so you would check the zoning ordinance. I mean, that's typically, when folks ask me, what does that mean? It says, well, it means you ought to call someone like Laura Turway and ask her, what does that zone allow that you're buying that property in? But you ask a good question, but, but I'm not so sure that a notice purchaser would have been put on notice to do the kind of due diligence that we're all engaged in now.
Okay, thank you. The second question is actually for the developer. Was there no alternative approach that could remove this issue from the current adversarial positions we're featuring? Can you build the entire thing on your property, or are the limitations that you impact the size of your lots, or why, why is no alternative considered?
Well, if you look at the intersection there of Leland and Redaway, our half-street lines up directly with the opposing intersection. So that's really where this road must go. You can't offset that intersection.
You cannot?
Hey, gentlemen, we're going to be courteous to everybody. Thank you.
I appreciate you, you say you're not allowed to do an offset.
Not that, in all my time of developing, we've always had to align the intersections for, for traffic safety. I'm not a planner, but I can assure you that's, the city can speak to this, that the alignment of that intersection is an important element here.
Can you speak to that, Laura?
Yes, we have John Replinger, our transportation engineer for the city here.
Where is he going to sit?
I'm happy to sit down.
Maybe when you're done.
Well, I'm not sure we're done with questions.
We do, we do have a limitation in our code requirements that does have off-site intersections. So there can only be off-site, offset a little bit. If they're offset too much more than that, it becomes a dangerous hazard.
What is a little bit?
Five feet. It was 10, it went to five.
Mr. Mayor, I think your code probably has an offset provision, and I'm sure we could find that, but typically...
I think that generally answers the question. Correct?
It doesn't tell me if it was possible to do this and still comply with the law, to use an alternative approach, so, but honestly, it doesn't. But I'll just leave the question posed and move on.
Any other questions?
May I mention one other thing? Mayor, Commissioner O'Donnell, if you notice in what would be the lower left-hand corner, there's an existing house. So the only way to offset the road is to actually, you could only bring it a little bit south. It would have to butt up against that existing property line, and I suspect that your Public Works Department or your traffic engineer would find that's not enough of offset. So you either, you either locate the road, as we've done, which is line it up with the intersection of Redaway Avenue, or you make it very difficult, if not impossible, to run a road down into that property.
Okay.
Question is posed just for clarification.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission at this time? Okay, then we're going to proceed on to public comments. I have the Hillendale Neighborhood Association. Under the rules of the commission, recognized neighborhood associations get five minutes. So who's here from Hillendale?
Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm William Gifford, still, and still, still live in Oregon City.
Still.
Roy Harris, chairman, Hillendale Neighborhood Association, 1304 Beaver Lane, Oregon City.
And before we start, I'm going to ask you, has the Hillendale Neighborhood Association discussed this and, and reached some kind of consensus?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, we've had a number of meetings regarding this. We've had presentations at each time that this was on the ballot. We've had, we've, we've had additional discussions on it as well. We've had the developer come, we've had citizens come and give their, give their opinions about all of these plans. And we went to a lot of effort, especially this last, this last meeting, to, we thought this would be a really controversial issue, and a lot of people care about this and have varying opinions on it. So we, we did a little extra push and did more social media advertising, advertised in Oregon City, chit-chat next door, and, and we're trying to get a lot of people there and did not get as much attendance as I was hoping.
Yes, we didn't get any.
But, and we have a, we have a letter on file of, of the fact that, of the discussions that we had had, that there was no objection. If people didn't show up, of course, we didn't know about their objections, but that was the, that was the format, and we tried to provide that as equitably as possible. I do have some points to make. One is that we, the Neighborhood Association found that there is a significant difference between this design and the two ballot, previous ballot measures. And we, we thought the differences were so significant that we wouldn't want this to ever be considered as doing a voter go-around. This is not avoiding the will of the people, because it's not the same thing. It's apples and oranges. Personally, I prefer the other designs. I thought that the city got a lot more than they, than they gave, and, but that's the personal opinion. The Neighborhood Association opinion was that this was significantly different from the previous plans, and should not be considered as an avoidance of the vote. Another point I wanted to make was that there is really no park use here. This is not park land that's being developed. This is, this is private property that's owned by a private organization that has every right as any property owner to deal with it as they can legally. It's not taking away any park land. That's really important to remember. We aren't developing the park, we're not destroying the park. There's been a lot of rhetoric about, we're destroying Wesleyan Park, and I think we are not. And that was the consensus from, from our neighborhood discussions. The subject that came up tonight was really not discussed regarding whether or not a road is a structure or not. From my, my perspective is, the point is really moot, because whether it's a structure or not is not really the nub of this question to me. It's a, it's a question of property rights. The applicant has, owns the property and owns the easement. We can complain about, maybe we shouldn't have given the easement. Maybe when we sold the property, the city should not have given that easement. But that's a fait accompli. That's, you're not going back on that. It's their legal right. There were other arguments about, we don't need any more houses in Oregon City. And I think with as hard as the city is working on the housing shortage problem and the homeless situation, I think that a stronger case could be made that we do not have enough houses in Oregon City at all levels, rather than we have enough houses in the neighborhood. The, the fact of the matter is, this is, this is seen as an improvement to the neighborhood, as an improvement to the access to the park, which right now, occasionally it rains in Oregon, and I love to take my dog here on off-leash area. It's one of our three off-leash areas in the city. We use it a lot, and I don't like sloshing through the mud to get back to the, to the dog area. So this is going to improve that.
The other gentleman has something to say. You've only got 50 seconds left.
The access will be improved, and with the curbs and the lighting, we think that's going to be an improvement to the, to the community.
Yeah, just to make this short of it, is, all the input we've had from the people that have come to the meetings have been positive. It's our, it's our belief that the developments on private property, the easement was in place when the city acquired the property, knowing it was there, and we see no reason to oppose it.
Thank you.
Question?
Question?
Question for the Neighborhood Association?
Yes, sir.
Not to, not to minimize the value of a Neighborhood Association, how many people were in attendance that gave their support for this?
Which one?
Well, at the last...
The one that applies to this, not, not over the years, not prior, this one right here.
I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we had roughly about six people that attend every meeting, and then we had about three or four people additional that don't normally attend.
So, of course, I'm a member of the Neighborhood Association. There's no real requirement for a quorum. Whoever shows up is...
Right.
The voice of the people, assumption.
It was about a dozen.
Yeah, it's when you consider everybody that was there.
So...
But it's the only input we have to go with.
And it may not even be germane, but I also see there's 33 letters, 33, as opposed to six participants that are basically opposed. Now, the applicant's attorney has dealt with those in today's letter, but I just wanted to make a point that maybe there were six people there, and then unfortunately, until it affects people and they wake up, there's no immediate response. I do agree with you, sir, there's a wealth of misinformation on this development, and even as I sit here tonight, I'll be taking two positions. One is a private citizen, and one is an elected official. Thank you.
All right, well, just one other question. Is this project inside the Hillendale Neighborhood boundaries?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have David Abraham and Philip Abraham.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, commissioners. Philip is also my eyes, because I'm completely blind in this eye and legally blind in this one, so there's a lot of material we have. Three-minute limitation presents challenges, and considering the testimony that's been presented...
I don't know if you want to combine it, or...
We each get three minutes.
Okay. He's also going to be my eyes to read some things, for expediency. The issue that the lawyer for Icon brought up with the new document he provided, that resulted from a conversation I had with your city attorney this morning. I'm the one who's raised the issue of easement rights, and whether Icon even has easement rights. There's a lot of miscommunication. You are the servient owners of the land that contains that actual property that's designated as an easement. Therefore, the land still belongs to you. The question is whether Icon has rights to use that for a road. Now, they're all referring to a document from 1962, 55 years ago. There is one line in a subsection that designates this easement. It is very muddy, it has no clear definition. Today, we would have a whole page designating an easement in a deed. Back then, there wasn't litigation to worry about, handshake deals were made unclear. Does that easement right apply today? It's not clear if it does. Oregon statute has all kinds of definitions now of easement rights. Is this a pruent easement? Is this a gross easement? These things determine whether Icon has any rights at all. If it's a gross easement, when they purchase the property, they no longer have those easement rights. These aren't well-defined. It ultimately will rest with you to decide whether they have those rights. You also have multiple mechanisms to erase that easement completely. You've owned that land for 15 years now. The statutes in the state of Oregon say that after 10 years, if you've been the ones maintaining it and using it as you've designated park land, that easement can disappear and become nothing but park land, and Icon no longer has any rights to it. You also have other mechanisms. You can use eminent domain and say, hey, you know what? This is too much controversy, we're just going to take that back. You can also use, what's the final mechanism?
Give me my timer.
Sorry, it's, if you've had that property for more than 10 years, you can just say, it's now ours. It's squatter's rights. There's a legal term for it, but because you've maintained it...
Adverse possession.
At first possession.
15 seconds.
Thank you, yes. How many?
15.
Okay. I'm going to have to stop there.
For the first three minutes. Yeah.
Thank you. So there's a lot of questions and challenges. I asked the city attorney, have all of the original deeds been reviewed to try to get more information? That's time.
That's time. So because of the obvious connection between you two, I'm going to allow you to continue speaking with the help of, I assume, your son?
No, it's brother.
My brother.
Brother, okay.
Thank you for making me feel old.
We were trying to make him feel young.
So I, I get the fact that you don't have two separate arguments here, so use your other three minutes, and then we'll move on.
I asked deputy, deputy attorney if she had the original deed documents and had reviewed them, because they would help glean more details as to who has the easement rights, what are the specifics. She said, I don't know. And when I asked her if she or her firm had at any time been retained by Icon Construction, she refused to answer that question. So now, it brings to light, is there a conflict here in determining who has easement rights? Laura Turway felt that the deed documents were indeed in all of the materials submitted to you, but I've reviewed all of it, and there are no original deed documents except from the one 1962. There's an unclear photocopy, which by the way, as a subnote, for road purposes, was added to that deed in a different font and darker color ink at some later date, and there's initials by it. So this even sheds light that easement rights can change through time. And Philip, would you read the quote about pertinent uses? Oregon statutes provide that as land uses change, so do easement rights. So even if you decide maybe there is still easement rights, read that.
Generally, unless the easement contains an express statement to the contrary, use of an easement may be adjusted to conform to newly arising needs that the parties reasonably should have expected to develop in the natural use of the land under the easement. The principle is limi- is limited, however, by the rule that an easement owner may not materially increase the burden or impose new burdens on the underlying landowner.
So by state statute, and that's a summary provided by the Oregon Water Resource Commission, it's not the exact statute, but it's a nice concise summary. It says that as land changes through time and its use changes, so do easement rights. And Icon should have known that when they purchased a piece of property that they know had a park land easement, that there was potential conflicts and potential opportunities for the easement rights to change, and that all should have been investigated carefully, due diligence. It was not done. Okay, since we're limited on time... Oh, by the way, there is one document that has a little verbiage about easement rights when the city purchased the property, because that property would also designate easement. It's completely different verbiage and says nothing about roadway purposes. It talks about eating grass and egress, but not roadways. Okay.
Structures.
Structures. That's the other argument they're using, that permanent structures don't apply, so the vote of the people is nullified. The people have twice said they don't want a road on parkland, because that's what this ultimately comes down to, is putting a road on parkland. The definition of a structure ultimately is going to fall to you, but I would be very surprised if all the engineers in this room would say that a roadway is not a structure. It's a very complex structure, and we actually have provided you with documents from the Civil Engineering Handbook, since we have a civil engineer.
And maps of the layers of a road.
And maps of the layers that show a road is a very complex structure. It requires six different engineers to design and approve.
Sir?
Environmental, structural.
Okay, so I...
You're an architect. You probably are aware.
We've gotten all of that information in a couple of your briefs. I appreciate your time, but you're out of time.
Okay. So the people don't want a road. It's still a road. The muddied waters are even more difficult to cope with because now you're talking half-private, half-public. What exactly is it?
We'll get to it.
They are structures.
Thank you.
And this one?
Katie's back, so my timer's going to work again?
Maybe.
Maybe Jim needs some remedial instruction on how to operate a timer.
Need more remedial. In the full class.
So who else is on the list, Katie?
Jesse Bus.
There he is. Mr. Bus.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, just want to take the full three minutes. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I live in Oregon City. My name is Jesse Bus. I do want to recognize that this is a different proposal than the voters voted on, but what there still remains a common factor between this proposal and those two that have been rejected is you still have street within parkland. Now, separate from the easement issue, I'll focus on the structure issue, since Mr. Abraham wasn't able to get through that. If you look at the intent of the voters who enacted this charter provision, which was 1970, by the way, in November, it was to prevent major changes in use to parks and the erection of buildings and structures in parks. While this proposal may seem relatively minor, with a few feet of park being paved over, your interpretation on structures could have much more far-reaching implications for other parks. For example, if you decide that a roadway is not a structure, in this case, that could be applied in future cases where maybe the proposal is not to have a street on the edge of a park, but to go right through the middle of a park. And if you interpret a road as not a structure, putting a road through the middle of a park would not be voted on by the people, and that would not be consistent with the intent of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, Katie?
Nope.
Wow, I was expecting more.
Did you guys...
If there's anybody else who wishes to testify, this is your chance.
We don't get three more minutes, do we?
No, you don't. Then the applicant gets... Is that right? So does the applicant have anything for rebuttal? What is it, five minutes? I can't see it anymore. Five minutes, Katie. I'll have to get my glasses checked.
Mayor Holliday, Members of the Commission, Mike Robinson, again on behalf of the applicant. So I appreciate David and Philip Abraham's testimony. Interesting issues. Let me just say a couple of things. I don't believe this is muddy at all. This is the recorded deed which has the granted easement. You can look at it yourself. It's in the letter I gave you. I don't see any difference in the font. It's part of the typed statement. To try and take the position that a recorded document that has passed through title is somehow invalid is an extraordinary position to take. People get sued over that all the time. So I would tell you, unless there's something on the face of this document that suggests that it's been superseded or terminated, or it's an invalid document, there's simply no basis to try and discard the value of a recorded document in our public records. And I want to go back to a fact that is uncontroverted. Nobody at the city, apparently, let me put it a better and I think a different way. When the city bought the land, they bought it with the park, or with the easement, rather. It would have been, you could have potentially done, as many purchasers do, to ask the title company to remove an exception to title, which is what an easement is. That apparently did not happen. There is no indication that this easement is no longer valid, and I think the face of the document, that it's a recorded document, tells you that it's valid. I also want to say, and I don't denigrate anyone for making arguments, so please don't take it this way, saying that simply because someone has maintained property by mowing the grass, the Oregon courts have expressly rejected that as a basis for any of the elements of adverse possession. Mowing the grass doesn't mean anything in the court's views, and adverse possession is one of the most factually complex topics in Oregon and indeed in common law in the United States. So the idea that you can simply assert because someone's mowed grass that the city has title to that property, not only is it contrary to Oregon common law, it is in fact contrary to how you do this. A person that wants to assert adverse possession has to file what's called a quiet title action in the circuit court of our state and prevail. So unless a property owner wants to go to that trouble to get rid of an easement, that easement doesn't go anywhere. So again, I appreciate what they had to say. I don't see anything wrong with the document. There's no disputing in some title, and the facts that we've heard tonight, I mean, I don't even think suggesting that adverse possession is a possibility makes much sense. I appreciate the testimony. I appreciate what they're trying to tell you, but I don't think it's accurate. I appreciated what Mr. Bus had to say, and the only two things I might add, or I might say to respond to that, is first of all, you can look at the map. This is very minor, and it also serves the park. This is not a case where we're constructing a road to exclusively serve the 11 lots. We have said all along, this is something that can be used by park users, and it's something that can be used by park maintenance employees. And except for the sidewalk, the swale, and the road, all of the area within the 50-foot of easement is open to people who want to use the park for any purpose the park is open for. With respect to your action in this case being a precedent, I disagree with that. I think the city commission has the ability to limit its decision and to base it on the facts of this case. You have a 1962 document that is uncontroverted, that runs with the title to the park, to the city property, that gives this property owner the right to establish to, it's for roadway purposes, and that's precisely what we're doing. So I think that distinguishes this case from any greater attempt to do something else under the charter. So we appreciate your time tonight. We appreciate the fact that folks came out and took the time to talk to the city commission. We think that's viable, but we think at the end that you should follow the staff recommendation that allows you to approve the subdivision and determine that a vote of the people is not required for this use of the parkland. We thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So do we close the public hearing before I ask questions to staff, or is that part of the deliberation?
Either. Either.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing. So, Mr. Manager, you were the only senior staff person that was here at the time of acquiring the property for Wesley Lynn Park. And you were in... I wasn't senior at that point. And you were, well, you are now, so you know, you're turning the barrel, I guess. So you were in the planning department at the time. Yeah. Would you say that, A, that the city knew that the easement was there, and B, whether or not that they anticipated that at some point in time, they weren't contesting or worrying about the easement because they were figuring at some point that having a roadway there would be a positive thing for the park, or can you not... I honestly don't. I was not a part of the land acquisition. I have no idea what conversations went on. I wasn't part of the purchase, so you know, I was a, what, when was his name? 2000?
Two.
I think I might have been here six months at that point. I wasn't a part of any of those discussions. Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
I can kind of answer that question.
Okay.
Because I was on the Parks and Recreation Committee for 10 years, and we actually, I was on there when we actually purchased this property from the school district. And there was always the intention of having access on the north side coming off of Leeland. At the time, we didn't have the money to do that, so that's why it's where it's at right now. And so I guess I can continue with my dialogue here. So what that means is I have a real, I'm real sensitive about that park and all the parks in Oregon. So when you spend 10 years on Parks and Rec...
Getting paid what you get paid.
And so I'm real sensitive to that, but I'm also real sensitive about our charter. So this decision is real, I take it personally here. So because we know there's always that possibility of it happening again, that they may take this as a precedent. So... But I do see this as allowing access to the north side for use of that park. If you've ever had to go up there and play, take a six-year-old grandkid up there for a soccer game, and you have to walk from the south end of that park clear to the north end, you're going to see how valuable that's going to be, is having access up there. Let's see, what else I got here? As far as structure, you know, I think that's, right now, it's an interpretation. And that's what we have to make a decision on, is how we're going to interpolate that, and maybe that's a personal thing between each of us here. The, I think the legal status has been spoken about. And let's see what else I got here. I think that, I think that kind of covers it for me here.
Mr. I?
So just to clarify about the easement. So there's no evidence that staff is aware of, that the city looked into having that easement removed from the property before they purchased it, that you are aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We, I worked with Mr. Lewis to go back and pull everything we had with regard to this park.
Pull your mic down a bit.
I went back with Mr. Lewis, and we tried to pull everything we had with regard to this park and try to establish something, glean something from the annexations that took place with regard to this property, and we were unable to find anything further than what we provided with the commission.
I also was reading in the charter about how the purpose of the charter section on parks is to prevent major change, sale, transfer, vacation of city parks without a vote. And that section, in my mind, the only part of the development that applies to the charter is that 12-foot section of road and the swale, and I don't see that that impacts the charter's purpose. So that's, in fact, it would potentially do the opposite, as Commissioner Shaw mentioned, bring more convenience and access for people to the park. That's all I have.
Commissioner Megg, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'm convinced by our legal advice that this is not changing the legal status of the park. The easement has been in place well before the city acquired the park. Having a road access to the development as well as the park is a benefit to the park. Also, I'm not convinced that a road is a structure. It's a road. It's different. It's built differently. It's taxed differently. It's defined differently, and I don't think it raises to the level of requiring a vote. So in this case, I don't think the charter requirement for a vote applies because the development has been revised to significantly to build the vast majority of the development on either the private property owner's property or on the easement for which it was intended.
Commissioner Alda?
Well, speaking as a private citizen and not as an elected official and one who uses that park and enjoys walking through it, my feeling as a private citizen is this would benefit the park and improve its usability. However, that is not my role here tonight. It's unfortunate to say, as Mr. Gifford had to point out, there's much misinformation being published, and hopefully Icon and others can put that to rest because we're not taking the dog park. We're not doing, there's so many things that is not going to happen, and I wish those misconceptions weren't published because they're just very emotional and they're misguided. Now, speaking as an elected official, so many questions. I mean, we're being asked to determine two things tonight. One is simply a determination that the development meets all criteria, and that's actually the simpler of the two, although quite honestly, and I'm not the planner, I object to the main road being 28 feet wide as opposed to 32. I have a 32-foot wide road, and it's barely enough, but that's not a determination that I'm here to make either. I think that road is going to have to, I don't think its primary purpose is recreational access. Its primary purpose is to serve this development. Recreational access is a side benefit, but the existence of a road is not necessary to serve the park function. I listened to the attorney when I questioned the easement that said the person acquiring fee title to the property should check with the appropriate city or planning department to verify approved uses, and I understood his response was he didn't see that as suitable notice, that it was so vague as to be essentially meaningless. I think that question that'll come down tonight is, does placing a road in there, does doing this as proposed change the legal status of a park? And this really is a direct conflict between easements, road building, property use, structures, and our city charter. I guess on the question, I'll revisit that. On the question of is a road a structure, I've had firsthand dealings with this when I sat out there and faced this commission, and the definition was anything that was built on the ground was a structure. And I think Mr. Bus's argument is cogent in that how does any decision tonight reflect anything going on forward? And I think that needs to be considered because there's always unintended consequences. I don't think verticality, I have a civil engineering degree. I don't think verticality is a requirement, but that's my personal opinion. So a question was raised, Mr. Abraham, and I think it needs to be addressed at some point. It seemed to me, sir, that you questioned Ms. Richter's firm's ability to fairly represent this, saying that if they have in fact an ongoing or previous relationship with Icon, and in fact, the decisions of this commission are based upon information provided by them, then that information should be free of doubt. Would that be his correct assessment? Okay. He acknowledges with a nod of the head.
So let's stop right there for a second.
Okay.
Ms. Richter, do you have an answer to that question?
My firm has no connection with Icon Construction or any of Icon entities or the handresses personally.
Not now or never?
I did not answer the question because it's not relevant to the approval criteria that are before you. I am not the decision maker. I am the staff. So I am expected to have conversations with all parties, including Mr. Abraham, including the applicant, including the commission.
But you can unequivocally state that neither you nor Mr. Goodby'sman nor anyone at your firm has any professional relationship... nor anyone at your firm has any professional relationship with Icon Development?
Correct.
Neither now nor in the past.
Neither now or in the past.
I think it's important to set that aside because even the appearance of an impropriety needs to be addressed. So thanks for doing that. So in the end, I don't, I think this could be resolved somewhere other than here. The question is what takes precedence? You know, the easement, the, what we want to do. Once, once the thing became a park, did the, did the application of the code to the park law take precedence? And I'm just sharing my thoughts with you. I appreciate everyone that's come forward.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. So thank you, Katie, for getting back to me on the charter. So it's, what, November 70?
Yes.
Okay. So if we go back to that same slide that I was talking about, Chapter X, Section 41 of the charter. You were there already. "In any case where the date of the adoption of this section or existing structure do not comply with this provision, such structures and any additions or alterations thereto are accepted from the provisions of this section." So if you're taking that in its most liberal context, therefore, the easement would also be exempted from the charter because the easement was recorded eight years before the charter change. Is that an unreasonable argument to make?
I'd say that's one interpretation.
Okay. So I just put that out there.
Well, there, there is no existing structure.
Correct.
Well, there's, there is an existing legal structure.
Well, there's an existing easement, right?
Right. So, and I take exception with, with the, because I was probably the only one who was fighting this fight back during the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center taking over Kelly Field, a true charter park, that the city commission back then already set this precedent. They twisted themselves into all sorts of different pretzels to establish the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center over and above the language in this code without a vote of the people. So this has already been done. And what we're doing here, what we, what we're being asked to do here is essentially teensy weensy, inty beaty minor compared to what happened at Kelly Field. Literally, we wiped out four ball fields, all the stands, you know, places where kids were playing to put in what eventually ended up being empty for several years and a big parking lot with a coffee stand on it. So, you know, this is a completely different situation. I don't see, certainly if anybody wants to say that this is setting precedent, they're, they're way off base there because that precedent's been set 20 years ago. I come down to basic fairness and property rights. And anybody who knows me, anybody who's heard me talk, knows that that's where I'm at. I'll never, I'll never support an ordinance in this town that says you can't cut down a tree on your own property because that tree is yours, just the same as a stalk of corn is yours. And I say that this easement has been on the title from the day that, from 1962, a year after I was born, and it's been there this whole time and nobody's argued about it this whole time. The city bought it knowing it was on there. In fact, testimony from Commissioner Shaw says that even the Parks and Rec Commission at the time when they bought the land expected that a road would be there at some point in the future when we had the money to do it. I think the basic reason why the first two ballot measure, or the first two votes failed was because it's such a complicated issue and parks are such an emotional thing that people didn't understand Icon was willing to build, you know, the entire road at a full width with sidewalks and, and all of that stuff. And the city wasn't paying anything for it. You know, which would have included some street parking and some other things, I think. But the thing about this is here is that Icon or someone else, it doesn't really matter who the developer is, owns the property to be developed. They own the easement. And, and minus something glaring, I cannot vote to, to take those, you know, basic rights away from them on, you know, some technicality. That property is going to get developed into houses. We would be better off having a full-size road, but we're not going to get that now. I don't believe that the charter, that either one of the two constructs legally asking us questions about the charter apply as far as having to have a vote. So that's where I am. What is our next step, Ms. Richter?
Well, it sounds like if there aren't any more questions and there's no further deliberation, we would entertain a motion. We have identified on the, on the sheet in front of you, at the bottom half, the first half was in the event of a continuance. The bottom half is that you need to make a motion to, and the three choices are approve the application, finding that the subdivision criteria are met. I would add the caveat, subject to the amendments proposed by staff that were on your dais that Laura distributed, and the charter does not require voter approval. That would be the option one. Option two would be approve the application, finding that the subdivision criteria can be met, subject to the revised conditions. And if voter approval is required, include a condition of approval requiring voter approval and that a language of a draft condition is there. The third option would be a motion to deny the application, finding that the subdivision criteria cannot be met. And then once you have a tentative decision tonight, we will take your deliberation, memorialize it in a written findings document and return to you on November 15th for adoption.
Okay.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, is your position that the, the first two times we put this on the ballot were an error and it never should have been in the ballot to begin with?
No, I'm not, that's not my position.
Okay.
My, my position is, is that, that it didn't pass because it wasn't, the information out there was so erroneous that people thought they were, people thought we were actually giving the hander, Icon, permission to build houses on the park.
And that, that kind of information is still perpetuated?
Right. And at this point, you know, the, the use of the easement is so minimal now that it, it doesn't change anything. Not as far as Chapter 10 is concerned, anyway.
Okay, so I mean, I listened to your dissertation on Kelly Field. I'm not sure that the degree of impact is important. I don't think there's a, a number above or below which there's a, a degree of impact. Is it 15 feet for a road or an entire Kelly Field? I think the principle's the same. It's just speaking out loud and speaking as a public official, not as a private citizen.
Okay, so is there some discussion on which option we want to use?
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion if you want to give me a question.
Make my. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Parker Knoll subdivision file number TP 17-02, finding that the subdivision criteria are met, subject to the staff amendments, and that the city charter does not require voter approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay. So moving on, first reading of ordinance 17-1012, mending the comprehensive plan, zone change, planning file, PZ.
Mayor, would you like to maybe take five?
Yeah, let's take five.
Sure.
We'll be back at 10 minutes to nine. You want to see if Commissioner O'Donnell's going to come back in?
Okay. Yes.
Probably having some more chicken back here, I think.
Want to make sure he hasn't fallen and can't get up.
We are alive.
Oh, come on.
We, we are alive. We are alive.
All right, so. We have a PowerPoint for you. Oh, goodie. I'm excited about that.
There we go.
PC 17-122, first reading ordinance number 17-1012, mending the comprehensive plan. Planning files, PZ 17-01, zone change. ZC 17-04, minor site plan and design review. SP 17-114, allowing the relocation of the Oregon City Community Development Offices. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. I am going to sit in the audience since I am the applicant. So we'll let staff take this one, but I'm going to send it over to Assistant City Attorney Carrie Richter for disclosures.
Thank you. So this is a plan amendment and a zone change that the city is processing as a type IV quasi-judicial proceeding. And in those cases, the planning commission reviews the application. The planning commission had an initial hearing, actually two hearings, I think. First hearing and then it was continued to a second hearing because of the lateness of the hour. But nobody participated. Nobody submitted testimony. Only the city and its consultants testified. The code provides that with a type IV quasi-judicial hearing, the planning commission's decision, if it's an approval, is a recommendation to the city commission for its review and blessing and the adoption of an ordinance. The code also supplies that only people who participated during the planning commission can participate before the city commission. So we had no participation below, so I would think we wouldn't have any participation at this point. The other thing you should know is that your review is on the record. So the 197763 disclosures that I would usually give to the public about the presentation of testimony are not relevant here because we aren't going to have any testimony because nobody participated below. Makes sense? So I think where this leaves us is with the disclosures by the city commission. Does any commissioner have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare?
What do you mean by ex parte contact?
Have you discussed the merits of this plan amendment, zone change, and site plan review application with the applicant other than the policy decision to proceed with this request? I know it's difficult.
I don't know how to answer that question.
Just disclose what you have.
Well, I've had, you know, over the last year or so, I've had all kinds of discussions with city staff about this. You know, from the city manager to the public works director to the, the planning director. I mean, you know, this has been a subject of discussion, not only in work sessions, but in, you know, just general meetings that I've had with city manager and, and other folks. It's a, it's a, it, it's how business is done, as, at least as far as the mayor is concerned. I, I was not deliberating towards any particular decision, but certainly I've had discussions. I've visited the site.
Do you feel like you can review the criteria and make a decision based on the application before you? Rather than the discussions that you've had outside this hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have none.
Visited the site.
I've visited the site.
I've visited the site, too.
Laura, do you have any questions or about these disclosures?
Okay, we done?
All right, hearing none. I think we'll commence with the staff report.
Oh, right. Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, I have just a brief staff report that'll go over the major issues related to this application. I also have John Ruplinger, our city's traffic engineer, to provide a brief review of the proposed trip cap. So this is related to a minor site plan, a comprehensive plan, map amendment, and zone change for the parcels that. zone change for the parcels that include the Mount Pleasant Annex, where the development service... Excuse me, the community development staff will be moving to. The Annex building is 698 Warner Parrot, and Mount Pleasant School is at 1232 Lit Avenue. They're both on the subject property. As explained by Ms. Richter, we are requesting three approvals tonight, a comprehensive plan, map amendment, the zone change, and a minor site plan design review. For this map, you'll see that we have a little bit of an odd, small parcel on the property. We have... Most of the area has a quasi-public comprehensive plan designation with a little triangle of mixed medium-density residential, and that was really related when Warner Parrot Road was realigned. Realignment of zones doesn't change zones. There's a... Right now, there's an R10 designation and R3.5.
Can you go back to that, ma'am, for a second?
Sure.
So, I'm confused about this little brown triangle. Is that... It's not part of either property?
No, the medium-density residential is part of this property, but when the Warner Parrot Road was realigned, the zone didn't change. So, it became part of the property, but the zone didn't change. It's been like that for quite a while. And so, in this process, we are changing the medium-density residential to quasi-public to acknowledge what the whole property is from the comprehensive plan, as well as the changing the R10, R3.5 to the institutional zone.
So, why is that little triangle of brown still going to be there at the end of this?
It's not. So, if you see, these are existing. So, existing, it's quasi-public and medium-density residential for our comprehensive plan designations. They will all change to quasi-public. R10 and R3.5 are existing zonings. They will all change to institutional.
Okay, well, so my question still remains, because apparently I'm a dunderhead at this point, but if we're going from blue to yellow, why doesn't the brown go away when we go from... We're going from yellow to blue?
So, that... These are existing. So, on your left is the existing comprehensive plan, and on the right is the existing zoning.
Okay. All right. Move on.
As part of this rezone, there is a trip cap proposed, and I'd like to bring up John Replinger, our city's transportation engineer, to discuss how we will measure that.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. I'm John Replinger. I've served as the city's traffic engineer under contract for a long, long time. Some of you, I think, recognize me from planning commission back in earlier days. The... My role here is to assist staff by reviewing traffic studies performed by an applicant to support their application on virtually all land use actions before the city. In this particular case, as Christina explained to you, there are multiple parts. There's the site plan part, and then there's the comprehensive plan and the rezoning. Under a rezoning proposal, the obligation is for the applicant to compare the traffic impacts from the current use to the worst case of the proposed condition. Well, that would be very burdensome because the changing to the proposed zoning could allow a wide variety of uses, including some that included lots of traffic. To get around that, and this is a common procedure, is to use a trip cap. By establishing a trip cap based upon the prior use, which is the Mount Pleasant Elementary School, 46,000 square feet, about 400 students, we're taking that as the base for the prior use, and we're essentially stating and have as a condition of approval that the traffic would not be exceeded under the new zoning procedures, the new zoning designation. So, as long as the development comes forward, stays underneath that trip cap, no further analysis is necessary. If a future proposal comes before the city as a land use action that would increase the traffic on the entire eight-and-a-half acre parcel to exceed that trip cap, we would require the applicant to do a more detailed analysis, to do the analysis required under the state's transportation planning rule, to justify and explain whether there was a significant impact, whether there was a change in the functional classification of any street, and so forth. By establishing a trip cap, we are allowing development to occur with new uses, such as the city offices, as long as it stayed beneath the use that occurred when the Mount Pleasant Elementary School was in operation. So, those numbers are actually right there on the screen in front of you, 238 AM peak hour trips, 143 PM peak hour trips. Each time a use comes before the city, they will have to be compared with those, and as long as they fall beneath that level, there is no further transportation analysis for zone change. The other part of this that the applicant provided, a traffic analysis letter that discussed the impacts of the site plan, that is, the remodeling of the office, including things such as the analysis of driveway locations and so forth. There are a few minor conditions of approval related to that, but the main thing is that the trip cap is proposed as a condition of approval to deal with the issue of the rezoning.
Question. How do you deal with enforcement of a violation of the trip cap? Do you look back every year and...
No, actually, we would... That's a good question, and the answer is that we have expected traffic impacts based upon the uses. The Institute Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, based on building size or other attributes associated with the project. We routinely require the applicant to bring us a trip generation calculation for each land use action. That'll be done, in this case, whether there's a land use action, a site plan, building permit. In each case, the applicant, whoever it is, will be responsible for doing that calculation, bringing it forward. We'll keep a tally of what's occurring on the site, compare it with that 238 and the 143, and notify the applicant whether they need to do more work, or whether they are within those limits. This is... Oregon City has not been a leader in implementing trip caps. There is at least one previous example. Other cities are very experienced in using it. I do not foresee it being a problem.
So, to clarify Commissioner Mangerberg's question, once this... Let's assume this gets approved, and Laura and her staff move into the building, and over the next three or four years, we become really busy in the planning department, and they end up having, you know, twice as much staff and twice as many people coming. Is there a mechanism there to deal with that?
Well, the city does have broad authority to do things with site access, for example. It is likely that we would not try to deal with exact driveway counts, but if we were suffering congestion, it would be within city's authority to go through and convert a driveway to right-in, right-out, for example, to eliminate the specific problem associated with traffic, rather than variable, you know, number of trips that occur on a, you know, fluctuating basis.
Okay.
So, this analysis is restricted to the impact solely of planning moving there?
Well, the current condition is there is a private school operating in part of the old facility. We have looked at that specific use and what traffic it is generating, have added the proposal to relocate community development to it. We've added those two together and find that we're below the trip cap. If the elementary school were to leave and another office were to come in and take over that spot, or if part of the old athletic field were to be developed, we would add that proposal in and compare it with the trip cap. So, we know it's out there today. We know what to expect from community development office. We would keep track, keep our tally.
Have you done an assessment of what the future...
Future state.
...police facility might impact the site? That's all in the same general area.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Have you also looked at the police facility that's being planned?
The police department had a traffic engineer do an analysis of traffic operations, and that was at least on a preliminary basis. When they come in with a... An updated proposal, and the school goes away, it'll be their obligation to give us the numbers associated with the new facility. We'll compare it with the trip cap and determine whether it falls beneath, or whether some additional analysis is required.
So, the answer is that each time any kind of development happens on the site, it re-triggers this study?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
My understanding, we've had this discussion, is that based on our numbers and based on CD's numbers, that the total of the community development, the two of us together, will be below these trip camps. We're going to be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next?
All right.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So, I just want to review it. It's through the land use process as well as business license review. So, if the school does expand, we would get that through business license.
Okay.
The applicant has also submitted a minor site plan designer view. This is usually done either as a type one or type two process, but as this is a consolidated application, I'm just going to quickly show you what is being proposed and how it meets the requirements. The exterior of the building has... Will have new roof, siding, windows, doors, landscaping, and a parking lot. There'll be some parking spots removed and added. So, you'll see where it slashed and added in the stars. There's 40 parking stalls. A picnic bench and a flagpole will be added, as well as some additional landscaping. The landscaping near the intersection of Lynn and Warner Parrot will not be amended, as that is the location of the proposed roundabout. And so, community development staff has focused on landscaping directly related to the building and the area surrounding the parking lot adjacent to the building. These are some examples of the proposed landscaping. This is showing just some more detail of the exterior of the building. Some of the proposed elevation, as well as some of the existing photos of the side elevations. This is the elevation you see, that you would see from Warner Parrot at the parking lot. And you'll see a new kind of enhanced entrance, as well as the enhanced entrance on the elevation that kind of faces the school. So, there's dual ways to get into the building. This is the layout. You'll see a central corridor with doors on either side to the lobby area. To the right are all the staff desks. And a lot like our community development department today, there are kind of the breakout room and conference rooms are on the kind of the opposite side of the corridor. There's an existing gym, kind of the blacked-out area, that will stay existing condition at this time. So, the criteria for zone change are on our screen, and staff believes that the proposal as condition does meet these criteria for zone change, and that does include the trip cap. For everyone's benefit, we just showed some internal photos for context. These are the main corridor and existing bathrooms. It will be repurposed. Classroom one is where a majority of the staff cubicles will be. Classroom two will have existing staff cubicles and a conference room. This is the gym, existing condition. Oh, excuse me. I will go back to the criteria for zone change. If you have any questions, I'm available as well. We also have staff here that is ready to answer any questions.
Questions, anybody?
I kind of have one, but I guess it's not really related to this. If I could kind of say this now.
Just blurt it out.
Okay, so... Could we get a cost option on what it would take to mimic the entry that you're doing on the roundabout side to the side where the public's coming in? Have the same kind of deal on both sides of the building, just as a design. Because I think that's really a cool... I'm having both.
He's saying do this on the other side.
Yeah, because that's where the public's coming in, that side, and I think that's the coolest intro.
Good evening. Laura Turway, City of Oregon City. Thank you very much for taking the time to your application. It's good to be on this side, too. I'm really excited about this project. As you know, we're not really related to the criteria, but we're in a lease right now. That lease is up in April 21st of this upcoming year, and we couldn't be more excited to go to a home with a location where we don't pay rent. So, my budget is thank you for this application. It'll be very good for us. A lot of our customers are sort of on the outer edges of the city where we have UGB expansions and things like that. And so, for the building and planning, this is a bit more centrally located for that particular purpose. Also, I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One is that when we calculate the transportation impact of the building, we calculated it for government office in the existing square footage of the complete annex. So, the number... If we get more staff or fewer staff, I appreciate the more staff, but I don't know that that'll happen. But that wouldn't affect the transportation impact. But what I can tell you is that it accounts for the gym area being government offices, and it's not. So, there is some flexibility to grow within the existing numbers that we have right now. I have with me Matthew Crawford, and he is a structural engineer, CCS, and he can talk to you a little bit about the cost estimate for the north side. What we have on the north side is the installation of that wood paneling next to the doorway, but not that lifting of the roof modification.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks, Mayor. I should have to clarify. I'm not a structural engineer. I'm a technician. Someday. Yeah, so we do have... We've treated both entries kind of the same, but you're right, the awning is more predominant on the street side. We haven't looked at a cost estimate to do it on the north side specifically. I could give you an estimate, but it would just be a guess.
Guess is good.
I would probably say $30,000, but where we're at now with our estimate, we have... We are pretty much at our max budget for this project.
Okay.
And is what we're seeing on the screen the final proposed design?
Yeah, it is. With the colors being...
I do have the colors, if you want to see. They show up kind of dark on the screen.
So, let me say my particular sentiment about public buildings, and that is while we should do, you know, good architectural work, I'm not a big fan of marble and solid oak and all of those other kinds of things, because we are stewards of the public's money. While I appreciate the commissioner's sense of architecture, I think it's an occupational hazard, I don't see the utility of spending, you know, several tens of thousands of dollars to do something like that that's really just artistic and doesn't have any utilitarian effect. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'll certainly join in that opinion, and I think the structure needs to reflect energy efficiency. I see a lot of windows. I hope they're thermally efficient. I remember looking at the original. I hope there's... There's no concerns. This is a stick-framed roof. It's not a truss roof.
Correct.
We're going to maintain that stick frame status in the future.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I don't see any interior walls. Usually on a stick-framed roof, they bear the load. I guess we shouldn't get into that tonight. That's an architectural thing, a structural thing. I don't want to put you in that position. I've got concerns about cost overruns when we address that particular feature.
Just to add, we did do an analysis of the structural system, and it is in fair condition, but it was lacking some seismic requirements that would be required for new buildings. And as part of this project, we have done a seismic retrofit to bring the building up to code for the requirements.
The only thing, I saw an original picture. It looked like there's an additional beam in the ceiling, and I didn't understand what... And I didn't understand what function that performed. But again, I'm not the engineer on the job.
Commissioner Hyde?
I would think that if there was any, anywhere where costs could be cut or modified in some way to allow for an attractive entrance on the other side as well, might be something to consider. But I think that it would be really nice to have nice entrances on both sides. But that's just my opinion. But my, my question is about the timetable. I mean, you said your, your lease is up next April. So are you, if this is approved this evening, are you hoping to move forward on this? Or this is a ordinance? Yeah, so.
On second reading.
Yeah, right.
First reading.
Well, first, first reading tonight, and then a second reading.
Yeah, it's a quick turnaround. I mean, for the most part, it's a pretty simple TI. So if we are lucky enough to receive a first approval.
That's the rule.
Oh, attended improvement.
There you go.
I didn't even catch that one. If we're lucky enough to receive approval tonight, then we would be issuing a bid later this week for contractors. And you would probably see us come back to the commission with a contractor, contract, in early December, the first meeting in December. And then we think it's a three-month, four-month job. And so we would have sufficient time to complete it. The other thing I just want to say about the budget is I'm learning that I'm probably not very new and interesting because the size that will be here is the size that we have now. And we're using all our same furniture. And everything is a reuse that we have right now. So we're trying to be as cost-effective as, as possible. So we're, you're noticing that we're doing new siding and new roof because that's what's structurally needed on this building is new siding and new roof. Because like all institutional buildings, sometimes deferred maintenance gets the best of it over the years. And so we are doing our best to stay as fiscally responsible and to come in as low, under-budget as possible. It's a bit of a shoestring budget, given the project and the square footage. So a lot of the windows, we're not actually touching. Just the ones on, for the main part, the ones on that big picture window side that you see. You'll see Lynn Avenue kind of come up with additional architectural elements, but not the other side, for example. We'll kind of save that for another day, another budget if it needs to be done. And, and then the reason why we're emphasizing the, the intersection-facing side is because of a code requirement that says that structures have to face the intersection. And that works out pretty well here because we have that central corridor. So we can kind of face both directions.
Anything else?
I was wondering how you were gonna take what really looked like a school building and make it a development services building. But I, I like the design, and it's really attractive. Well done.
Thank you. And we, we have been working with the school district, so we may get some art pieces to kind of honor Mount Pleasant School and kind of integrate some of that as well.
Commissioner Shaw?
So did you come to an agreement with the police department for the use, for the rental use of your, of that gym, or?
Agreement is the least term.
I'm trying to come up with $30,000 here, Laura, so.
I'm really looking forward to having zero rent. And I think that will be in the city's best interest.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 17-1012, amending the comprehensive plan, planning files PZ 17-01, zone change ZC 17-04, minor site plan and design review SP 17-114, allowing the relocation of the Oregon City Community Development Offices.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hyde, second by Commissioner Mangenberg. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Richter?
Ordinance number 17-1012, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City approving a minor site plan and design review, amending the comprehensive plan map and Title 17 zoning, Chapter 1706020, the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the designations of the following properties. Clackamas County Map 3, 2E06DB, tax lots 2000, 2003, and 2008 from the MR Medium Density Residential Comprehensive Plan Designation to QP Public Quasi-Public Comprehensive Plan Designation. Clackamas County Map 3, 2E06DB, tax lots 2000, 2003, and 2008 from the R-3.5 Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the I Institutional District Zoning Designation. Clackamas County Map 3, 2E06DB, tax lot 100 from the R-10 Single Family Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the I Institutional District Zoning Designation.
Anybody want to hear that again? Anybody, anybody want to hear that again? We'll, we'll hear it the next time. Call roll.
Commissioner Mangenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Yippee.
Is there a motion for the extended genit?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call roll.
Commissioner Mangenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Hyde?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Communication. Mr. Ranger, can we keep this short?
Certainly. We'll start with Chief Band, followed by Library Director Cole.
October 31st. I just want to remind people that that is the day that downtown we honor Rod Livkey. We kind of have made a point to, to honor the way that he lived, not the way that he died. And November 3rd is the, we're coming up on the four-year anniversary. But the last event that he did in this city as a volunteer was Halloween downtown. He loved kids, and that was a big deal for him. And so join us downtown. There's always a lot of people down there. But SAPI will have several people down there. Wendy will be down there, and Ziva, their daughter, who's a real fun fireplug to hang out with, will be down there. So I look forward to seeing you there. I think it starts at 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
That sounds right.
So, and just as an annex to that, please, folks, if you drive downtown on Halloween, be prepared for a huge traffic jam. Find another way around. Go 99W, take 205 Bridge. I don't know, but it's, you just don't want to be there unless you have to be. So come down walking. There you go. Use the elevator.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to remind you that tomorrow evening, starting at 5:30, is the Foundation Donor Thank You Party and our one-year anniversary at the library. It's just a real casual drop-in affair with a few comments. At 6:00, we'll be serving wine in the library, which is always nice. We will be closing one hour early in order to accommodate this event. And you are all invited, and love to see you there.
Just a quick reminder that this Friday, October 20th, from 5 to 6 p.m., we're having the open house meet and greet for the top three candidates for the Community Communications Coordinator position that we're interviewing for. The meet and greet will be held from, once again, 5 to 6 this Friday at the Oregon City Public Library in the Community Room. So hopefully be able to come over and meet the three candidates as we make our final decisions here moving forward. And then, last but not least, I just wanted to let you know today, I had a, I had a great opportunity. I went up to the Northwest Pavement Management Association's meeting. It's pavement managers from.
That sounds exciting.
It gets more exciting. From Washington, Oregon, Idaho. And. I can get one up real quick. I, I got it ready. But Matt Paulson, our Streets Operations Supervisor, was nominated for and received Pavement Manager of the Year for that organization, so. Really want to congratulate Matt. He does a great job, not only with our pavement maintenance utility fee program, so coordinating, we did 10 significant pavement projects, coordinating that with consultants, the work that we do internally with our smaller pavement machine. And while doing all that, it's, it's actually pretty amazing how few complaints we get considering how much work we do during the summer trying to maintain our pavement. And also, and you've had this presentation, the pavement maintenance utility fee brings in a little over $2.2 million a year. We've been able to take our pavement condition index, which was at 60 in 2011, up to 76 today. So that's significant improvement with those funds. Top five percentile of cities of our size. Correct. So just, and then, you know, not only is it about pavement, Matt coordinates our winter response during the winter events that we have. Snow plowing, using the ice r, closing streets, dealing with events that we have. You know, like many of our managers and employees, I think the duties they perform far exceed the job description. So just really proud, proud of him. Done a great job for us in the community. Just wanted to say, let you know that we have another employee who is an employee, Streets Manager of the Year for, for that organization. So pretty exciting. So he got the award? He did, today. Yep. Awesome. Great. That's all I have. Well, just one thing. I was driving in from Cambie this after, this morning, and there is a gigantic pothole at 99E on the inside lane going towards Portland. Well, Matt would never let that happen, so it must be ODOT's. Well, I know, but it's, 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 it's big enough and deep enough. It's probably four inches deep. So, you know, have somebody, if they need to reach ODOT or whatever, but let's get somebody to look at that. We can look into it. Commissioner Mangenberg, you got anything for us?
In the interest of time, no.
Okay. Commissioner Hyde?
No, not really.
Yeah.
Nor do I.
Then we're adjourned. Thank you.